Thank you everyone. I'd like to talk to all of these work session, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners at 1400 hours on July 25th, 2013. The order of business today is discussion and presentation of the updated financial policy and purchasing policy. Ms. Wilson, do you want to?
Yes ma'am. Back in February at the retreat, we presented you with a draft. We also had attached with that draft, which was the bulk of the information that you got in February, was a policies and a procedures manual where we detailed out every step in the process of the software to process financial transactions, whether they be revenue transactions, whether they be expenditure transactions, or things of that nature. What you have before you today is a revised financial policy. Financial policies cover everything from purchasing to how much we want to keep in our fund balance, to our policies on our budget and how we present it to the commissioners, our reserve policies, our expenditure and revenue policies, capital expenditures, our capitalization point that we use for inventory purposes, and our investment policies, along with the final portion of it is the purchasing policies that deals with all aspects of purchasing for the county. We can go through this page by page, or section by section, or however you would like to do it. I don't know if you have questions. We tried to send it out to you a week early so you could have time to preview it and present with any questions, or we can just go page, section by section. Y'all tell me what you'd like to do.
Section by section. Any other preference? Is that section by section? That'll be fine, section by section. I have a generalized question before we get started. Who is the author of this policy?
We, I believe Henry County is a portion of this policy. Other counties may be a portion, and then a portion of our current policy is here, but Jenna and I are the ones who may have taken sections from other policies and added changes or deleted.
Okay.
But it was essentially other policies combined into one and then tweaked for Spalding County.
Okay. All righty.
The first couple of pages just talks about the purpose and objective. You know, just to ensure that the county has policies in effect. Right now, we have a purchasing policy in effect, but we've never had a financial policy adopted by the board. Financial policies are, as I said, go into different areas, not only the budget, but things, other things as well. Jenna, do you want, I can let Jenna, or I can, or we both can, go through section by section, or Jenna, if you just want to give a broad overview and then go from there.
Let, let me make a suggestion.
Okay.
We have the first page, and generally, except for when you get to about page nine, there are minimal changes. Right on to, because everybody's had had an opportunity to read through this. Chipper? Okay. I know that I have some specific concerns, so if we can kind of, I took the old policy and compared it to the new policy, and there were questions that I had about areas on the first one, so if we can just kind of use the first page, that would work for me.
All right.
In the, in the second paragraph of the first page, it talks about what the, what the purpose of the policy is, being sound and whatever, and then in the second paragraph, it says if this policy is effectively used. Why wouldn't we use it effectively? What, what does that mean? It says if effectively use a county budget served as a primary tool in allocating financial resources to programs and services.
Well, that means if we adhere to the budget and don't go outside the budget with projects that are not included in the budget during that year, and we have been known, several boards do that, not just this one, but several things, several entities throughout the year may decide that their priorities change and go outside the budget and purchase things or do things that are not in the original budget.
Okay. Can you give me, for instance, when did we do that last year?
Park at six was an example.
Okay, but it, it was still within the confines of our budget because that money was...
But it was not a project that was talked about during the budget process. That's, there are...
That's not general funds. When, when I'm looking at this and I understand that the outside funds and the sploths and all that is, those are restricted funds that can only be used for those items, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when we're talking about us going outside of the bounds, I'm assuming that this means general funds, taxpayer revenues, or service revenues that are going to be effective about this, because if we take money out of sploths, it's already restricted and designated for that, so you can't go outside the bounds there. If you have an allocation for money at the park at six, or any other project out of hotel motel taxes, that should not affect what your standing is according to this paragraph in allocating resources for programs and services.
Last year, we did the roof at Fairmont that was not in the budget.
Okay.
That is an example of what we did last year that was not in the budget.
Well, another example would be, aside from an emergency situation, if we were to continue to delve into our reserves, that would be an example of not effectively implementing the budget, because that would be causing the reserves to further dwindle.
Right.
I mean, I know that's not specific one, but...
I don't think this is meant, some counties in the years past, until a few years ago, didn't even have a budget. A lot of counties, ma'am, a lot of counties only have a general fund budget and may not budget other funds. Back to the park at six though, we did not specifically say out of the hotel motel tax fund that year, that we, during budget process, that we were going to build the park at six. It came later during the year, just like the roof. Things that come later and how we funded them was through fund balance. So you, you set a budget, you levy taxes, taxes for it, and then after that, unless it's an emergency like the tornado or something like that, where we got partially reversed, you should stay within those parameters, and that just, some folks do, some folks don't.
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a condemnation of anybody, it's just a, just a statement.
Yeah, I just really needed to know what is effectively used with, man, in terms.
Yes ma'am.
Um, any other...
Probably the biggest thing is on page, the budget format. Let us, Jenna, will you explain the level of control on budget format for the...
The level of control, which was a general fund, is at the department level. Well, I'm, I'm just...
Okay. It's two and three.
But the level of control for the general fund is at the department level. What that means is that we set a budget for each department, and we monitor each department, and if a department goes over budget, then either the Board of Commissioners would have to appropriate new money to cover that, or we just have to let them go over budget.
But if they are not budgeted for that, how, why should they be going over budget without approval?
Well, an example would be when the truck for community development died, we didn't have that money in the budget, and we had to come to the Board of Commissioners to appropriate new money for that department so they could buy a truck.
Right, but what you just said is really kind of different from them going over their budget, because they didn't go over their budget until we appropriated permission for them to get more money.
Primarily with elected officials. It, we were very lucky this year, I think very few budgets went actually over the budget, but a catastrophic illness at the jail where an inmate has to have open heart surgery, that may burn up, or at CI, wherever, that may burn up 75% of their budget with one injury. Overtime, you cannot, the sheriff has to maintain 24/7, 365 coverage for the jail, and he may, because people are out on vacation, because people are out on sick leave, because people are in training, his overtime budget may go over, but his regular salary budget may go under. That's why the level of control is the department. If we had a level of control that was line item, if they went over on a line item, we would have to come to the Board of Commissioners for approval, and essentially that would shut down county government. The way we do budgets is at the total for the budget. Say administration, it's total for everybody in administration. Now, within that is, let's say, training and travel for each commissioner. You may go over in your training, but you may be under in your travel. So now, the county manager is authorized to move money from travel to training to make up that overage. If we did not have the level of control that we have now, before you could go to any future training, you would have to get a budget amendment through the Board of Commissioners. So as long as you don't go over your grand total budget for administration, $200,000, or whatever it is, you, the county manager can move money within that department, except the budget ordinance states that the county manager cannot increase salary appropriations. So I can't, you know, give anybody a raise or move money from materials and supplies to salaries for an additional slot. Only the Board of Commissioners can do that.
But where does it say that?
It says it in the budget ordinance.
And that's really...
No, wait, no, wait, they said in the ordinance that you adopt. I'll go get a copy.
No, I'll look at it later.
Okay. But what that says is the county manager can move from categories except salaries. I can move, I can authorize the movement of money, say, from tires to gasoline if they don't have to buy a new set of tires for the trucks this year and they're running a little over on gasoline, you can move it from there to there. Or from, if they have some postage, they're not using it, the state decided to pay for postage and they needed a new computer, we can move it from postage to departmental supplies or capital outlays, small, small tubes, small equipment.
Within the department.
Within the department. I can't move from sheriff to administration, or finance to clerk of court. Can't do that. Only the Board of Commissioners can do that, but just within the, within the budget for that department in order to expedite county operations, and it doesn't happen until the last six to nine months of the year, you know, after they spend some money throughout the year, and utilities may be under, something may be over, we start moving things around to balance out.
William, one more question, and I'm, no, maybe I should probably know this. Why is, what is the difference between our budget ordinance and this budget policy?
The ordinance is a, we are required by the state each year to adopt a budget ordinance, and the ordinance just says, lays out appropriations that the board makes for each revenue category and expenditure category, and the budget must balance for all funds. You can't, you can't have a fund that doesn't balance, and that's part of general accepted accounting principles, and it's part of state law, that you must now have a balanced budget and it must be adopted by ordinance.
Okay, that I understand, but I'm, you know, you made the comment about it's in our ordinance that the county manager can't move funds for salaries. Why wouldn't that be in our policy? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that those two should reflect each other in stature and in detail. So that's kind of my question for that.
If I may, policies and procedures are adopted to reinforce what the ordinance says, and to say, you know, to say it in both is somewhat redundant, it's like us doing, enacting ordinances that we have state office on.
What we do, yeah, what we do, but my point is this, if our, if we, if we're addressing a policy, and the policy is how we want it to run, then I think it's a very important thing that in the budget formation, that explaining that, here she says it's done at a departmental level and it tells you about them not being able to move money in different areas, that is significant.
I don't have an argument, I just think...
Yeah, so I guess my concern would be, since I haven't really read the budget ordinance, I, you know, I would, at some point, I would be interested to see whether or not it follows track with each other on our policies, so...
We can put that in here because it, this general statement in here, on page three, "The county shall maintain a system of budgetary control to ensure adherence to the budgets and shall prepare timely financial reports to compare the actual budget amount in Congress, and available budgets shall also be included. The reports should be distributed to department directors on a monthly basis. The proposed budget should be submitted to the Board of Commissioners, blah, blah, blah." That's all tracking state law. We can insert in here those portions from the ordinance about moving from one line item, the county manager is authorized, blah, 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 from the ordinance right in there.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that, but you know, like I said, I'm, I still would just like to be able to read the ordinance at some point.
Okay, we'll give you, I'll get Ricky to email everybody a copy.
And, and you made, you started reading and you said the county is required...
"The county budget shall be submitted to the Board of Commissioners for adoption prior to 30 days before the end of the fiscal year..."
You said that was on page three?
Yes ma'am, it's the last paragraph before reserve policies. "A copy of the budget shall be made available to the public upon requests, the news media, and advertisement of the availability of a proposed budget, and a public hearing."
Yes sir.
Blah, blah, blah. "The public hearings should be at least," we, we follow all those, that's tracking state law. We publish the notice in the Griffin Daily News, we post on our bulletin board, and we put copies of the budget on the front counter.
In this document, there, to me, there are some conflicting places where the county is not, is not defined, because in some places it says, Spalding, like on the first page, it says Spalding County's financial policy set forth below is the basic framework, and then further back, there are some references to the county that have to do with, I believe, with the county manager, or the financial...
Administrative services.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you'll point those out.
If, I will.
You'll take a look at it and see.
I mean, I understand, I think, I think it's important, if someone's reading this and they don't have a clue, to understand, you know, when we refer to the county, does that mean Spalding County Board of Commissioners? When you refer to the finance person, when you refer to the administrative services person, when you refer to the county manager, because it gets all jumbled up, because I'm looking at some of these things where it says the county will and the county does, and I'm thinking, I don't ever remember voting on this, so I don't know if you're talking about us, or if you're talking about you. So that's all I had on the first page. Anybody else got something? Go ahead, Fran.
I have two things. The term, third paragraph down, "in a fishbowl," which is trying to say that you're transparency.
Well, I'm...
On first page, "The county operates in a fishbowl." "The county operates transparently."
Okay.
And then under the second identified item of "Maintain sound financial practices that meet all applicable standards and direct the county financial resources toward meeting the goals of the county's strategic plan." A copy of the strategic plan should be attached or somehow included where it can be identified.
Which plan do you want, sir?
Well, my next question is, is...
Is there a strategic plan?
That's number one.
We have several, we have a comprehensive transportation plan, we have a comprehensive park and recreation plan...
There's parts and pieces, which one adds it all together?
None.
All right, we need to, we need to formulate one. We have, how can the county facilitate an actual budget when we're only doing parts and pieces versus the overall scope of what we're looking at? I mean, it's one thing to flip a fingernail, it's another thing to lose a finger, it's another thing to lose a hand, and that's what we're talking about here between department, county government, and the authority, separate boards and authorities we have working for.
Did you notice in here where we, and I'm not sure I have, I don't write it, it talked about our goal to maintain the, the fund balance, I think it went from like 15% of the general revenue, and that's, that's not, that's not constitutional officers, that's just for...
That's the fund balance.
Fun, yeah, fund balance.
Yeah, and we bumped it up to 25% for discussion.
So my, my question there is, is what is our overall goal in creating a strategic plan? Is it that each year we plan to increase our fund balance by X, Y, Z? That is...
And since, I mean, we don't have a comprehensive improvement plan, which this is what you were tied it to, and I would suggest until we are able to develop one, the board with Ms. Wilson and Jenna, sit down and facilitate our strategic financial plan, budgetary plan for the next five years and the next 10 years. That way, we have a goal to work for, and we, we know what we're trying to do for the next five and 10 years for Spalding County, because I may not be here in five, you may not be here in five, but at least we're setting the framework to where they don't have to deal with what we dealt with this year.
So it gives us some objective data that we can measure, where we are and where we're going.
That's pretty good, because I know we covered the debt section, it's mentioned in the, of the five theater plan we have there, so it only makes sense if we have one.
I think that's a great idea. Any other suggestions? All right, I'm good on page one. We had, hmm, I don't know what to make out of that. On the next page, I saw one of the bullet marks that said, under, it was under the broad purpose of the financial policy, is, it says promote cooperation and coordination with other government entities in the private sector in financing and delivery of services. What does private, what does that in financing mean?
Whether we be lease purchasing, whether we be anything to do with how we finance or how we deliver services, it may be public-private partnerships.
Okay. Where, where are we actually improving productivity and eliminating duplication through assessment of programs and operations? I mean, is, is there something formally happening?
We look every year during budget time of how to eliminate duplication if there are any within department to department, and that's why we have reviews independently with each department, and we have the Budget Review Committee to help us look at anything that's duplicative, which we did last year.
You got a real word, or just you?
Duplicative.
Thank you for sharing that.
I'm sorry. And I did mention it several times because I think the sheriff asked me, or one of the sheriff's part, because essentially, within those five or six divisions of the sheriff's department, the duplicative part was that everybody, under the old administration, budgeted their own tra, uh, training supplies for ammunition and targets. Well, we, the new sheriff, and I always thought it'd be better to consolidate it under one, under the training officer, which is in administration, rather than each division having their own cache of bullets and targets, and so we consolidated it into one, and guess what? They now shrunk.
Okay, that was great explanation. I remember that. And expect service users to pay their fair share of the program.
We, we are evaluating right now our licensing program for alcoholic beverages and looking at new license fees. We went up last year on park, this year, on parking rec fees for the second year, because we get an analysis of those, and we also, our business license, general business license fees, y'all went up on when we brought it to you, and some of the services that we offer. The one that sticks out is the driveway pipe, that I remember that we evaluated and decided that we were subsidizing it much too heavily.
Okay, so that's an, that's an ongoing process.
That's an ongoing, yes.
Okay. Let's see, budget calendar, I'm looking down at budget format, I think she went, that was on the second, on the second page.
We try to bring a budget calendar to you every February, because that's when, we actually try to bring it to you a little bit before that, the details out, when we start meeting with the department heads, when the budgets are due, when we're going to have the public hearings, when we're going to have the budget review with the Board of Commissioners and things, and we bring that to y'all for adoption in February.
Before we go into budget format, let's back up to the last identified item where it says, "I expect user service, service users to pay their fair share of program costs. Do away with expect and replace the work we require."
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
And then, when we're talking about a calendar, instead of just doing a budget calendar just on the budget, the establishment of the count, of the budget for each year, we should look at a budget calendar for that includes what you just talked, you know, going through the review and with each department, et cetera, et cetera, then coming to bring it before the board, et cetera. But I'd also like to include the updates to the budget when we're going and make our reconciliations to the budget, and then at the end of the year to include any village, the date for the village digest and our information and all that, so that everybody is aware of what's coming when.
Okay. That second part's gonna be a little hard to do, because that's based on when they get the notices out and when the 45 day period, things of that notice. I'm fixing to give you a calendar that I are working on right now for the tax digest that tells you, you know, we're in the 45 day appeal process right now, and when we intend to advertise notice of property tax, you know, adoption, village rate, et cetera, et cetera. They gave you... Um, they gave me the draft of that today, but I generally do two separate calendars for that instead of one, but I can combine them. And the middle part of what you said, what was the middle part?
Reconciliation document you bring.
Okay.
It's like the adjustments, you know, the, the adjustments.
Ending year budget adjustments?
We're normally wanting to end the year to do that.
Yes.
And it would, I think it would be better if we make those adjustments, at least quarterly, that way we can keep up a little bit better with what's coming, if there's any out there. Uh, I mean, that way we know if the sheriff's department's got the cars, fine, we'll go ahead and make that adjustment for the cars. If we have to make an adjustment for, uh, something else, we'll make that adjustment but on a quarterly basis instead of at the end of the fiscal year. That way we will be able to keep up with the finances, well, I mean, now that we're not, it will help us tell the taxpayer, uh, more and allow us to be more transparent.
Is that, is that a problem, legislature?
I think it's a problem, it's just proactive.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, Ms. Garrison raised her hand, I'll let her go ahead. I was just gonna ask, is there any way that, I mean, would it be better for our staff and our citizens if we changed the dates of our fiscal year so that it would be easier to plan? Or is that a bigger headache and we wanna... I don't have any idea, I'm just throwing that out, and I didn't want to take anything away from what you were raising your hand about, but I just, that was... Let's let Jenna talk about end of year budget adjustments, and then we'll talk about changing the fiscal year, because it's been done three times.
I was just going to say, typically the reason it is at the end of the year is because of the sheriff's vehicles. Uh, the sheriff will order his vehicles in January or February, they don't come in until April, and I really need an exact amount to do the lease. Uh, the leases, you can only draw them down typically on the first or fifteenth of the month, and so that's really why they are in May and June, is waiting on the sheriff's, uh, lease purchase.
Okay. Is he waiting to order the vehicle so that the tax money is already coming? Okay.
I understand that, but how many, you know, but the taxpayers don't, so that's why I...
So he orders in February, they don't come in until May, so you can't, you're saying you can't take the money out of the budget until you know exactly how much it is? I mean, when he makes the contract, don't they say how much it's gonna be?
Well, but he has equipment, and our sheriff is very conservative. If he's got equipment that he can take out of one car and put in a new car, he does that, and so he may order eleven cars, but he may only need to outfit four completely. He may only need radar for one, you know, he, he moves equipment around, so I really don't know, and the equipment is a, a good portion of the lease purchase. It's anywhere from seventy to a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment for his vehicles.
But, I mean, can't, can't they split that up? I mean, can't they use the cars, 'cause they're getting them from somewhere else, and then can't they do equipment separately? Because that adds whatever it is he pays for the cars already to be reconciled.
Well, I have had to do that in the past, but typically I like to have it all together because I book the equipment on the vehicle in our fixed assets. Like, I don't book cars and then book equipment, I book a vehicle at the total cost, so it might be the cost of the car and the equipment divided up. Does that make sense?
I, I hear what you're saying, but I thought, okay, so with fixed assets, there's always gonna be a depreciation.
Right.
So, but we know that the lifespan of a car with the sheriff's department is not that long.
We only depreciate for three years.
Three years.
So I guess I'm kinda saying, why is that fixed asset, since you know it's really, the lifespan is just not, I mean, I...
Why is a vehicle fixed asset?
Because we set our capitalization rate at five thousand, fifty-five, five thousand dollars. That, a capitalization rate is where you decide to put things on fixed assets. Now, we can set it higher, um, some counties set it lower, but, um, we set it at five thousand dollars so that you're not keeping up with every little hundred dollar recorder, every little eight hundred dollar laptop, you're keeping up with the bigger things that are gonna last longer, and five thousand dollars is what's called our capitalization...
Threshold.
Threshold.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where we start keeping up with fixed assets. Everything else is, uh, supplies or small equipment.
And that's still later in here, right?
Yes.
I remember our section.
Well, actually, Jenna, where was the five thousand? I think it...
I think I saw it.
It's in the purchasing...
It's in the purchasing, I saw this, yeah, it's further back.
Okay, it's someone else. Jenna, were you still going?
Well, I was just gonna say, I can review everything, um, on a quarterly basis, and if there are any, um, um, any kinds of appropriations to be made that, you know, any amount of money we can do that. But typically, uh, the appropriations that I'm making at the end of the year are for the, um, Homeland Security grants, which are reimbursement grants, so, you know, I don't know how much is gonna be spent until then, and then the lease purchase on the vehicles. Um, it's really things that I, I don't have an idea in the first quarter of the new year.
And let me explain that, too. We budget zero for cars for the sheriff's department. But in the budget, we say we're, we look at lease purchase, we look at lease payments and when things are coming off, and then once the cars come in and we spend the money on it, then, and we get the appropriation back, and we get the money back from lease purchase, then she comes to you and you do a budget appropriation. Otherwise, we'd have to guess on, say, five hundred thousand dollars for cars and five hundred thousand dollars in revenues, rather than guesstimating, we do it this way, um, so that, and we, it does require a budget amendment at the end of the year.
So my understanding is the money, there is a sum of money in our lease purchase account already that we purchased these?
Yeah.
Stop playing that stuff, 'cause we're not...
We have two separate ways we can lease purchase. Several years ago, we borrowed, Jenna, how much?
Two point, we, um, we contracted with the GMA lease pool for two point five million dollars, and that means we have a line of credit, basically, up to two point five million dollars. Uh, this part I don't really understand. The first time we borrowed it, it was debt to us when we repaid it. But since we have borrowed the two point five million, now it's considered to be an investment asset, and so when we borrow it, it doesn't show up as debt service, uh, it simply shows up as, um, using the asset and then paying back the asset.
Kind of like a line of credit or some sort of...
That is a line of credit, and that's the way it works, like a, as far as accounting for, it's a line of credit.
But it, it has a much better interest rate, um, even back from interest rates where I put four percent, it was typically two and a quarter percent that we were paying. Um, and it's very easy for me to administer, and, uh, that's typically the way that we have gone with financing. We did finance the fire trucks and the, um, Norton Station through BB&amp;T, our bank, um...
That's long-term lease purchase?
Yeah, long-term.
We went through you all.
Typically, the lease pool is short-term, uh, four years and under.
We went twenty years on LB Norton and, Jamie, was it ten years on the trucks?
Uh, it was ten years, nine years on the trucks, and I think it was only ten years on LB Norton.
Oh, okay. But you can't go a maximum of twenty. We went maximum of twenty on the CI when we built it, that's a certificate of participation lease purchase that we did on the CI, and when we bought the Cook Shopping Center, that was a twenty-year lease purchase as well. Can we just tell you why we do lease purchase?
Yeah.
State law requires that a county government cannot be in debt December thirty-first of each year. That means we can't go out and do a mortgage like we do on our houses for fifteen years. County has to be out of debt. You do a lease purchase, it's a financing mechanism that the state developed to come in for long-term purchases, and it allows you to lease purchase over up to a period of twenty years. Your appropriation each year is in your budget, and should you decide, like the fire trucks or a building or something like that, should you decide not to appropriate your lease purchase payment during that calendar year, then the property would revert back to the fire truck or the bank or whoever. Uh, but it is a mechanism for long-term financing of capital projects only.
So LB Norton wasn't paid for with any impact fees?
The debt service on LB Norton sixty-six...
Um, we are allowed to use sixty-nine percent of impact fees to pay for LB Norton Station. What we did was we leased the, um, we leased financed it, and every year I apply sixty-nine percent of impact fees to the principal and interest, and the fire fund is reimbursed from the impact fee fund on that. It's the same thing we've done with Lake Park, we were allowed to use seventy-five percent of impact fees to purchase that, and we do the same thing with the debt service, we paid the debt service and did impact fees, reimbursed us seventy-five percent of the principal interest.
So when will you ever get to where you're actually paying the principal?
We're paying the principal.
Right.
We're paying, we're paying the a hundred percent of the, of the lease that's due every year.
Okay.
It's just we're reimbursing the fund that paid it from impact fees, rather than...
So we're borrowing and using, borrowing and using.
Right, because we don't have a hundred percent, that's seventy-five percent, to, to pay for it.
Okay. So, Commissioner Ray wants us, and I, if, uh, I have, I have no problem with that, changing, um, expect service users to pay their fair share of cost. Do you guys, I know what we, the two of us, what do you, what do you think about that? Because what that kind of means is that, you know, everybody in park and rec that participates in an, an activity will have to have a, pretty much have a fee, some usage fee. Um, who else would that include?
Any service that we offer, like the, um, building inspection, we analyze our building permit rate so that, um, the community development department pays for itself. There go quote-unquote tax revenues used to pay for community development, they are fees from building permits and zoning inspections and rezoning, um, applications and special use applications and all this, pays for that department, so there is no tax burden, because only the people using that department are the people getting, either having their property rezoned, building a new house, adding on to the house, you know, they don't get unless you, you know, add on to your house or build a pool or something like that, your tax dollars do not go to support that department up there. So it's a user fee for the services that are offered.
What about the service at the, um, recycle center?
The board has chosen not to levy, uh, to continue and levy a tax on the recycling centers, rather than, um, privatizing that or going to a charge per service.
Well, I mean, if we expect all service users to...
Well...
I mean, you know, because we build a gym, or we build a swimming pool, or tennis court, whatever, and if you want to be a member of the senior center, you pay twenty-five dollars a year annually to offset...
But that is subsidized. You subsidize park and rec.
Right.
You subsidize, uh, recycling and trash collection.
But those are still services.
Correct.
So it's gonna be kinda hard to say, you group of folks need to pay for services but for this. Yeah, I mean, I see what face you're making, but I'm just saying, we need to be very considerate of when we say require service users to pay their fair short, share of program costs, because we don't have to do recycling. It's not one of our mandated requirements, not rec.
Rec.
So recycling is just the first thing I'm thinking of. Who, you know, I don't know how, what other things are out there that might...
We make money on recycling.
Yeah, I know we would. Well, you know, and then...
It creates a stiff thing.
But the only thing I would say is that, is at some point, just as William said, we need to look at the cost of having that person to be there, um, plus that they have to have gas in the vehicle. I would expect that we should be able to come up with something that would offset that, but, you know, not to just say, okay, it's five dollars per kiloton or what, how we measure. You know, you can't do something arbitrary, but I just think that if we're gonna do, make a blanket statement like that, we just need to be aware of how many areas it's gonna impact and what specific areas.
And that's a policy change.
And so I'm, I'm all for requiring end users to, to do a fee. I just, just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're, we're just, just and fair with everybody. So, you know, I know we get a lot of people who will be really upset about having to use the recycling centers, but you have just as many people who say, my tax dollars paid for the senior center, and now I got to come out here and pay a membership to get on the treadmill. Well, I'm, I'm just saying. So that's why I'm asking you guys, what are your concern? I see we'll get it, Mark.
I, I just can't sleep where, you know, it says fair share, it's a lot of program. We, you growing up on football, 'cause you football finished, the hundred dollars. It doesn't pay that, pay to operate that football program, I can tell you that, Mike.
It's about two-twenty per person.
Right, and, and that's, you know, if you turn it over to association, they gonna charge two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, 'cause they gonna have to have to do it. How many kids, a small kid, you gonna have to go pay two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to be able to afford to play? Just like the senior building. If you pay what it costs to operate the senior building, twenty-five dollars ain't even a tip in the bucket.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't know any...
I don't use, if I use the senior center, I should have to pay to use it, but twenty-five dollars ain't even a tip in the bucket. He's talking about, I don't know what, I, I'm waiting to get an equal time out here for, for the utility...
It's one, it's a dollar and thirteen cents a day. I, I did the math, I said, I think it's a dollar and thirteen cents a day to use the senior center if you went every day that it was open. So in answer to the issue about the football, I don't see any little girls out there benefiting from us subsidizing the football program. There's no flag football program.
They play, five and six-year-old.
There's no little girl.
They could play. They, they, they don't have a rule like that says they can't play.
No, but all the emphasis is on these little boys who have this goal of going to Spalden High School and Griffin High School, da-da-da-da-da. If everybody else can, can make it happen, and I'm not saying that a transition wouldn't require some help, but there needs to be a game plan to make that happen. I, I, I beg to differ with you, because I see these little kids go out there, they got nicer cell phone than I got. I don't know where they got it.
Free phone, right up there near Wilkes-Barre.
No, I, I, I don't know if they, I've seen the free phone, these phones I'm seeing are not free phone. I'm walking around with some Walmart sneakers on, they got on Jordans. So if mama and grandmama and auntie want you to play some football, then, you know, I think that they'll do the same thing as the little basketball girls. If the equipment is so expensive, maybe they need to be playing flag football until we can get it together or nothing. The point is, everybody should be equal in what we're allowing to do, and that, that change in football is a transitional thing, but, you know, you, you just can't say, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna charge you money for this service and this service and this service, 'cause I think, what are we, what are we supposed to do? Do roads?
Mandatory services.
Uh-huh.
Courts. Well, you have to provide all the court system, you have to provide tax assessment, you have to provide tax collection, tax collection, you have to provide administration of the county, um...
Jail.
No, that's the sheriff's responsibility.
Well, but...
Yeah, under...
Yes, but I mean, it is a mandated service.
Yeah.
The jail, and as far as the sheriff goes, you have to have the, he has to be able to serve papers, maintain security at the courthouse, and provide jail, uh, which leaves, you know, animal control, uh, roads and... animal control, oh, roads and bridges, I'm sorry, you're responsible for the maintenance of all roads and bridges. But those are the biggies. You know, we do animal control, that's not a mandated service. Rabbities protection is handled through Health Department.
Fire protection's not a mandatory...
Fire protection is not, water, sewer is not.
Law enforcement on the roads is not a mandatory service.
Patrol division is not a mandatory service. Criminal investigation division is not a mandatory service. Narcotics task force or special operations is not a mandated, parks and rec is not a mandated service. Refugees collection is not a mandated service. Cooperative extension, I can go on and on, but we have chosen to provide those as a policy of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners, no matter what year, you know, over the years, you know, we didn't do recreation until 91, and then we took it over from a joint...
City-county.
City-county. I don't think, it wasn't an authority, it was just a...
They did away with the authority when they found out the authority could put a sales tax on them, so they did away with it, before they had to change that.
That's exactly the reason they did it.
So, you know, airport is not mandated. There's lots of things we do.
You're talking about a whole other planet. Commissioner Ray, do you think we need to have a session where we can really look at all these services before we officially change this, 'cause it's kinda gonna be kinda hard to change it and not really know the impact of everybody? I mean, I stopped the list at roads and whatever else, I mean, it was like 20 things he named after that.
I got the list right here.
Oh, you do?
The, yes, ma'am, we can have a little session.
I mean, we just need you to know that...
Well, that's part of developing the budget, too. What are you gonna be your priorities? Are the mandated services the priorities, and then if we have any money left, then A, B, C, D, E in rank of order? You know, it might be animal control, recreation, refuse, and then, you know, maybe way down here for...
Would you be for a building inspection?